Gas-fired pumper on it, so we can pump and roll. You know, the one that we have now, we have to be stationary. This one here is going to have that added feature to it. Like I said, we're replacing an aging truck that's thirty years old. That's been kind of a rule of thumb when you get to that age, we replace them. Uh, any other questions?
Is that a MTO?
No, no, it'd be a PTO. It'll be an automatic. The one we, the last one we had was a ten-speed. This one here will be an automatic.
What kind of dollars would you, sorry?
Steve, what do you think?
A little over three.
Still gonna be red?
You bet.
Can you please use the old one?
The old one? Oh, there's, we'll sell it. Uh, we've got some ideas of maybe some other departments that maybe want the chassis off of it.
But you can't sell it like to a rural, like, uh, is that?
I'm, I'm assuming they'll pass it back, so they could be sold to the rural department if you ask me. I was, uh, someone was saying the other day that they passed some new regulations. ISO for rural departments, they have to have pumblers that'll pump more than five hundred gallons a minute. And a lot of them had five hundred gallon a minute pumblers. So this one here would be, maybe it'd be of benefit to some of those, those guys if they needed it to help with their ISO rate. Don't know a whole lot about that. It was just something that brought up in conversation.
Once you get bid, tell them to take them to build the trucks.
No, we were talking about that today. You know, it could be six, seven months. Depends on their load, you know, what they've got, you know, before our.
How many places bid on this?
We were, we'll send it out to probably three or four. You know, it depends, uh, you know, who's interested.
I'm sure that's a bit of a work. Anybody else have any questions? Well, you're here. Congratulations on being.
Got the money all saved up.
No, we'll be back to ask about that later.
Well, Blake, congratulations on being a new chief.
Okay.
And look forward to working with you and, uh,
Appreciate it.
Former chief, uh, and you, all the service that you've given us through the years.
How many numbers are behind that three when you were talking about?
Mayor.
A little bit.
Do we have problems?
Three hundred thousand?
I don't think we need a motion right now. They're just gonna submit the bids. They're just gonna bring us up to speed on what they're probably gonna come back and ask for. And then, then we'll come up with some money.
A little bit injured.
Okay, next is the heating minutes and appropriations. Did you have something to add?
Yeah, I'd like to move into the rest of the agenda. It's encouraged.
How much should we pass to consider the, the entirety? A lot of excitement, yeah. Second by councilman Trill. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, please pick a role call move.
Kingler.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yep.
Latrell.
Yes.
Addy.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Richard.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. I have a. Yeah, can we do it without? By councilman Addy, by second by councilman Miller. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those who favor say aye. Oppose, same. Motion carries or adjourned. We'll move into our, uh, work session. Katie, do you have anything at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you. To Lynn. Further. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just. Thanks, uh, wanna talk about the new lease here? We've got that as a first.
Okay, um, just so everyone is aware of what, what's going on, there is a copy of the previous lease in your packet that was signed in two thousand and ten. That lease is sort of unique. It went for about a year and a half, and then the school was to notify the city if they wanted to renew it, which to me is very hard to keep track of. We have a new superintendent and all of that. So, um, in a recent meeting, we decided that we needed to update the lease. There were some things in there, some language in there that I just didn't like. So I updated the lease. The, I guess, most important part of the lease is this is not for rent. What they are paying, what the school district pays us for is a reimbursement for utilities. And, um, the reason that we don't rent the property is because we don't pay property tax on the property. So, um, the, Mandy had run some numbers on approximate cost of, um, the utilities for each one of the buildings up there, and, um, that's why you see the number increased a little bit to thirty-five thousand versus the thirty-one in the previous lease. This comes closer to the utility number for this particular building. Karen Nemechek is here, and she's provided kind of a, a handout for what the education building is and what they do and the improvements that have been made. A big concern, and you'll hear this again when we, when we talk about the daycare leases, which we'll be addressing those in December, November, December, uh, because they are also ready for renewal, is, um, the heating and air issue up there is not good on any of the buildings except for the library. And I think law enforcement's okay. That is something that at some point needs to be addressed. It's either really hot or really cold. And I don't go in the education building as much, but I know the daycare buildings have an issue. And right now, the education building has no air conditioners on right now. So that's a concern. We are the landlord. We are required to provide, you know, a suitable environment, and that's not happening right now. You know, they're old buildings, and they're gonna probably continue to take lots of upkeep, but, um, that's a really rough overview. Do you have questions for myself or Karen on the proposed, yes?
As I can remember, when we took over to the north campus, we, we decided we were gonna send, we were gonna lease those buildings out pretty much at cost, right?
Exactly.
But didn't it turn out to be a little less than cost?
Um, yes, which is why the numbers have gone up a little bit. The, the number that Mandy came up with for the education building was about thirty-eight thousand. But what is a natural gas? You can't, the natural gas. Natural gas, we, we can't apply that, you know, natural gas to each building, so she just had to kind of, we, it's a guesstimate. It's a thirty-eight thousand. For example, the administration building that sits, that sits there empty is about twenty-one thousand dollars a year. So, um, they do cost, but this is very close to what that is costing the city.
So, am I right in thinking that if we do a long-term lease, we're gonna run into the problem of cost adjustments over time? If, if we do a long-term lease, it's gonna be hard for us to guesstimate how much that cost is gonna be. So we kinda need to have periodic reviews just to update the cost.
Yeah. And, yeah, and that's why we went with the five-year, which, um, the hospice, the port library, that's a five-year. The yearly, it's just hard to keep track of because.
We also included in those leases, new heating units, new air conditioning units, and that type of thing.
We didn't, no. And it's.
Is that something we need to take into consideration?
And that's, you know, I don't know, and I don't know what the timeframe is for that sort of thing, but it is an issue up there.
Well, there's some things through some, like trains and programs.
We did talk to them a couple of years ago. The problem with that is to do all the energy efficient programs that you can take advantage of, the cost upfront was so enormous that neither the school nor us thought that was a great idea at that time. We, we had a pretty extensive, um, analysis of how that would work out for us. And what they were proposing would save you money, but the payback would be like, you know, thirty years from now, you might, you might see that pay off. But the upfront cost for most of that, no matter how you did it, was gonna be a lot, and you wanted to make it affordable at this time, so.
How long does that boiler, it puts last up there?
Uh, that, yeah, that was one of their new, so I'm not sure what the lifespan was. Probably, you know, thirty years on that. But they put that in about two years before we took over the facility, so that was also a brand new. Not sure why they did that, but, um, like they did.
Wasn't part of the problem that Jill mentioned that our boiler has too much capacity?
It does. Yeah, the oversize, which they did almost everything up there, the oversize, and that's typically what the state does with their, with their systems, is they, they build them for expansion, I guess. I'm not sure what they thought was gonna happen there, but that is. But no matter what we looked at, as far as energy efficiency with windows or ground source heating or whatever, you know, just that upfront cost was just, you know, high. And so we didn't feel like we could really afford with really any of that unless some other source of funding came about. So it comes down to, do you want to upgrade things at all at once or slowly? And then is the school paying for that, or is it us paying for that?
And that's my thought with the five-year lease was that gives the city and the school five years to think about those issues and how they can be paid for and how we can work together. It's obviously nothing that's gonna happen right away, but, um, you know, long-term, we need to, both parties probably need to look at that issue. But this gets us a lease. Right now, we don't have a lease at all. I mean, I know it's expired, so, um, I don't know. Karen, do you have any, anything you wanna add, or?
No, I think, um, what I, I would, I provided you guys with a thing of the services that we provide there and also, um, the, what we've already done to the building as far as improvements inside the building and then general upkeep for the building, just to kind of maybe give you a better idea of what really is going on up there. And I would really love it if, if the council would like to come and visit the building. I would be happy to give you a tour of the building. I do think one of the issues that we have with the boiler is, um, just in talking with Lynn a little bit and Tim Watts is, they don't even make parts sometimes when the boiler breaks down. They don't even make parts to fix it. So I know part of the, part of the issue is they're making, they're making parts, or I don't know how, how that even happened, but, or, but it's very difficult to fix it when it breaks down. And it does break down quite frequently. So, um, we try not to, um, but we do have, in the building, we do have, I don't know if I want to farm, but we do have electric heaters for when the heat doesn't work. And we did purchase in-room air conditioners that we only put in five rooms to work when the air isn't working because when it's hot, and it's so hot, that, um, people with asthma or some of my female staff that are pregnant or our students who are really in a, well, it's just best that they're students that we don't want to get hot and irritated. And so, um, those things are, are concerns for us, and then we work around with that. But it's also, um, having those things, we're very cognizant that that does run up the electricity. So we try not to do those things. And we, we have gone through and we have programmed all of our thermostats to run. It goes, in the wintertime, we turn, it goes down after five o'clock at night when we're gone, and we, we jump down at night, and then on the weekends. So we try to maximize those savings for, for the city because we do appreciate everything that you've done with the building for us. And so we want to be cognizant of not running up those bills, so.
Well, these are very important services that I've added, not only to our community, but the communities that are surrounding us. I know there's a lot of activity. I've noticed a time when I was up there and had a meeting in the library, there was a lot of administrators from other schools and stuff. I think it used to happen being there. It was just kind of impressive to see the, the traffic coming in and out on the special ed side. And then I've been fortunate enough to get to do the mayor proclamation for the early learning center and all the little people that we have up there. It's pretty impressive. I know, uh, as being a grandparent and a parent, the importance of childcare if you have working parents. I mean, it's, plays such a vital role in our community, and I think we really need to support it however we can. Having the thousands, we need to continue to do that. And I think that this would be a good topic we can have on our planning session here in a few weeks on some things about, um, learning centers and the apartment building up there and start thinking of ideas that we, as a governing body, can place and, and update it so it'd be more efficient and lower utility bills. We gotta come up with initial funding, but I think with what we have, in my opinion, up there, it's a real asset for our community. We need to, uh, I think we need to continue to move on and, and work with them up there. They're doing things on, as many as they can, but I think maybe a goal down the line is maybe each building have its own standalone heating and cooling and eventually let the, uh, system go away that's up there that's probably inefficient. In fact, when natural gas was cheap, it was probably the thing to do, but things have changed. Maybe there, hopefully there might be some grants out there or something we could look at that would help us with this stuff.
Yeah, we're still gonna pursue that. Yeah, we haven't forgotten. And what you just described would be the ideal situation. But I, I can tell you that the actual, I mean, when, when the system works as it's designed, it's actually fairly efficient. But when it doesn't, you get what Karen's talking about. It's either really hot or it's really cold. You have those frustrations or, because they're not, and they're all in the same system, and it's just the way it was designed.
Does that break down every once in a while?
It does, yeah. That's a real problem, as you're trying to.
Maybe we can put electric heater or something in there to back it up.
Yeah, and I think they've kind of done that a little bit on their own, so.
I mean, safe.
Right, right.
Safe board or something.
Yeah, that's an idea. The electric, we sell them. We sell them. We can buy them. Yeah, there's different ways to do that. So, yeah, we're gonna keep on trying to do best we can.
Just, and just so you're aware of the timeline, um, if, if there's no proposed changes, the school board has a meeting next Monday, so they'll look at this then, and then if they have changes, we'll go back and forth. And then we'd like to get it in place before July first so that we can get it underway. And then, like I said, the, um, the lease, we have one lease for the two daycare buildings. Mitchell County Partnership for Children. We, the city, actually sent a notice to terminate their current lease because, again, it has some ambiguous language that I didn't, didn't like. So, um, and their grant process kind of is a January deadline, so we're gonna look at that in December so that they know their numbers for writing their grants. So we'll, we'll come back with a new lease for them as well.
Okay, well, keep us, keep us informed or we'll move forward.
Okay.
Any other questions for Katie or Karen? Karen, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Find my. Next item on the agenda is the comprehensive plan. Do you have a small presentation you wanna start on?
Oh, very small. Anyway, uh, before I do that, city attorneys have given you this memo. We're about to move on to the next step. I don't know if you have any questions for, for anybody else. I think the key is in the middle of it. Right there, we see the three different alternatives there, um, as far as where the council addresses. These are clear, this, um, in the process. You just have a, you pay, you know, about the options for what the council does next. The, as you remember, the planning commission has, uh, probably started this process almost two years ago now. Been in the planning commission's hand for, uh, your, uh, first hearing they had, I believe it was in June last year downstairs. And so they've had it in their hands for at least that long. And, uh, they voted in their last session, uh, four to one to forward the conference of plan. Has written to the full city council for your consideration and approval or whatever you do. But you really have three options at this point. So what I was gonna do is kind of show you where we've been, what the comprehensive plan, uh, process is about, about how we got to this point, since we have numbers of the planning commission here tonight. And they can talk about what their perspective was and how they worked with the staff and with Hannah Kealan, our consultants from Lincoln, Nebraska on this, and how we got to this point as we, um, now slowly went through updating the conference of plan that, I think it was in nineteen ninety-four, so that's something to do with this. So it's been about twenty years or more. We really thought we'd be at the end of two thousand and fifteen, bringing this to the council, but with a lot of changes and back and forth, uh, so, well, we, we got to this point. So it's a little longer than we thought, but, you know, we still think it's a good comprehensive plan. So, so now let's, let's do the council tomorrow. So you have the full time. So, um, and we're not voting on it tonight. This is your first look at the first discussion on it. So I'm gonna start off with a sort of a product over here as quickly as I can, on PowerPoint or whatever. I don't know if you have any questions about the, that memo or the next step or what you're pulling to play and the whole thing. Theoretically, you can vote on it at the next council meeting. As the city attorney said at the last meeting, there's no need for another public hearing. I thought there was, that numerous public hearings now with the planning commission. What she did about a month ago was send, um, notice to the townships and the county and whatever, that we, uh, that passed it through the planning commission, not the council at this point, but it's not, it never be for, that's the hearing. So.
Yeah, it'll just be an ordinance. It'll just be an ordinance.
Yeah, adopt a viable ordinance is actually what you can do that, when you get that. So, um, you know, that could be in front of you at the next meeting if you actually take that. So that, that's the process you take. So anyway, I thought I'd stop here and not, not worry too much of this, but, um, anyway, you're gonna have to get out of the way. I thought this was gonna be. Yeah. Get this fired up. Okay, well, I'll.
Give him that.
We got to get our hands. This one out there. And we hit that light there a little bit. Yeah. There it is. All right, this is just, uh, like I said, this is our comprehensive plan. First slide here. What is it? What is a comprehensive? Uh, it's a tool. Basically, that's all it is. We don't go through this very often, but, um, you know, like I said, we should do it more than every, once every twenty years. I guess how, I'd make laws change or city changes, whatever. A lot of things change each one year, so I don't recommend going that long. So, but anyway, here it is. Most important thing, of course, is that, you know, make new changes. We need to set the top of that. Unfortunately, the same likes to slide down. I don't even know why. Why plan? Lot of reasons for that. Physical growth for the city, avoiding land use conflicts. We kind of stressed that from the beginning. That's one of the important things we're doing. We always had infrastructure. We were just talking about that, you know? We didn't know probably twenty years ago, nineteen ninety-four, that the city was going to acquire the, uh, girls' school. I mean, who knew at that point where it could end up, uh, two thousand and ten with that facility up there? And how, you know, we have to plan for that and whatever. So you always have those things coming at you. And then we have, you know, preserve quality of life, vision for the future, which, of course, is hard to do if you're involved in those things. It's not an easy process. That is a little small, but, uh, the elements that the planning commission's been involved with here, of course, we've grown with demographics. We've done a lot, a lot of demographics with Hannah Kealan, land use and zoning, of course, transportation. And, and actually, we started with a steering committee before the planning, the planning commission got this. We actually broke down the committees and addressed really every one of these things and put that into a document and sent that to the planning commission even before we even got, got close to even writing a comprehensive plan. So all these things were involved from utilities to natural environment to whatever, and we kind of studied those extensively as we went along. Now, there's things like, of course, zoning, some of the, in organs, which will become an action. Environment studies, health improvement plan, of course, and what we talked about every year in articles. And public facilities, city strategic plan, and economic development, it's a big, uh, big factor for cities. Continue, uh, what we did when we started this was we went through a process. We hired Hannah Kealan, our link at Nebraska, and they've been with us now for, well, the better part of two years. And we did, had, had extensive public participation in this, of course, newspaper articles, the media covers it pretty extensively, whether it's radio or print media or whatever. And, uh, with this thing, we also included a housing study, if you remember. Hannah Kealan said they, they were pretty good at those kind of things. So we jumped in and were able to do the housing study right in the middle of this, and therefore were able to qualify for that block grant we got on the housing, which were right in the middle of that, the demos, you know? So that, that was talked about when we started, but we didn't know we were gonna qualify for the grant. So that just came in as a kind of an afterthought, but it was a good afterthought because we were able to obtain that four hundred thousand dollar grant. A lot of demographic collection, like I said, objectives is kind of, you know, this. So anyway, uh, after reviewing this whole thing, of course, has to conform with dangers, uh, state statutes, and that's the statute right there, Kansas twelve, seven, fifty-one B, and all that kind of good stuff. We listed the notice of intent to the county commission and local townships, heating them up to breast on what we're doing here. Uh, comprehensive plan was eventually approved by the planning commission, except their, at their last meeting, and now on to the city council for approval. You know all that. The time arises on this. It seemed kind of long, so we, we kind of did sort of ten-year and twenty-five-year planning and all that. It was a little bit unusual in that regard, but we thought, you know, we do kind of a medium term and a long term type of thing. And then we're, you know, really encouraging the planning commission to look at the comprehensive plan and look at it extensively every year and that, that is part of the planning mission supposed to be doing. And then really come back, you know, within ten years and do another substantial, but don't, don't wait another one because it's, it fits too far out. Benefits of this, uh, reflection development since the last plan certainly does that. It reflects the, uh, changes in the city, incorporates the new statutes and legal issues. And like I said, you know, the state seems to change laws or not change the two names lately. They're, they're, uh, they seem to be reoccupied with a bunch of issues and some other things right now, but they do change their law squad a bit. And then in twenty years, you can run into a lot of issues. Consequences, of course, if you don't, uh, you know, you'll, you know, contain information, it's outdated, the plans, they're, and, and the existing plan will, will not withstand legal challenges if they're way too long, if it's too far out the gate. Options that we considered way back when, simple updates, um, or just a revision or a new plan. And, you know, we really want for the new plan, so that's how we got there this way. So that's where the whole plan came from. And what I thought I'd do is sort of in here, sort of in the middle of this, where have we been in the past five years as we've been planning? And I'm looking at, for, here, public facilities, if you, if you have, uh, kind of remembering in the past five years, we've, we just went in pool, we've, uh, we did Mill Street from downtown, all we've gone out for. Cool and Tower, uh, water lines, uh, we do have, uh, the extension of a, you know, a widening of the runway coming up here, the airports, um, of course, we're planning to rebuild East Main Street, possibly in the future, West Main Street. We do that. And get the housing, uh, housing block ran for four hundred thousand, down our business grants here around the corner where there are new masonry work and, uh, and roofing work even as we speak. Possibly here in worst safer outs of school, uh, the two hundred thousand, which we'll deal with in two thousand and sixteen. Of course, we're rolling along here at K fourteen, uh, taking a little longer, we thought. We thought we'd get that down in two thousand and fifteen, which you can see the breakdown here. And that's mainly the south some problems we get out there on that, and down in K fourteen that have been longstanding. Uh, but we're dealing with those eastern issues there, and so we'll, we'll get there. Uh, airports, uh, estimated originally two point seven, and to our cost here, it was very growing down here. It's gonna be extended and widened and just allow us bigger, better airplanes to land. North campus, you know, who knew twenty years ago we'd get this? But so far, new law enforcement center, daycare early learning that we talked about, new library, hospice shifted into the old library, new housing development, uh, they're breaking ground, pouring basements out there even as we speak. And the new Dollar General store, they, if you've seen the foundation out there, they poured that about a day. They went out there and poured that. Of course, they have, we have new community garden center out there, farmers market that's up there, and the, uh, outside park. So a lot of benefits out of that, of course, there's the estimated cost for the streets came in under that. And the contract job, and they're out there pouring concrete again because of the speaker, the gutter, and they're laying some loads rings out there. So, uh, so we're Fox, Red Mill, they got twelve, twelve lots for sale. Infrastructure's in there. They're turning three or four homes here this year. And, uh, you know, we know this in the future, you know, we're optimistic, they'll get all sold. East Main, we're estimating that one point seven, you know, eight locks, uh, gutter, bomb issue here in two thousand and sixteen. Water projects, ripped out the old cast iron, uh, caused a lot of problems as far as water. Got that taken care of. And we still are on track here with track engineering. They're still doing their, um, um, their studies as far as what, what the cause is. I mean, uh, they still think algae balloons. I mean, uh, they still think algae blooms and we have a number of solutions. Power plant for four point three million dollars on that, to break down to meet EPA specs and just take care of the Coolin Tower, which we've had there a long time. As a housing, four hundred thousand dollars on that, there we have, abolish and provide help from regional planning. He's minister and they grant, we're getting that kind of, and the plan is to go ahead and apply for another grant, next grant cycle if that's not a flaw. Uh, this slide for whatever reason doesn't turn out to be what I thought. I don't know why. It, it was on paper, it looked right. But anyway, these are the private businesses that have invested in our community and were passed by, here's the University National Bank. Some of these I didn't remember off the top of my head until I talked to-